Good evening, everyone. At 6pm and I declare this special meeting of council open. Welcome to all councillors, staff, members of the public and the public gallery and anyone watching on the live stream. City of Swan acknowledges the traditional custodians of this region, the Wajak people of the Ngunnaw nation and their continuing connection to the land, seas and community. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and their descendants. The disclaimer is the terms and conditions of entry to this meeting are posted at the door. And as you enter, please ensure you abide by them after you have read them prior to attending the gallery. And the purpose of this meeting and the only item on the agenda is a strategy to improve governance issues at the city of Swan. Item three, attendance and apologies. You'll note all councillors in attendance, other than councillors Henderson and Zanino. They'll be joining us shortly as they're both attending an important meeting in the Swan Valley. The CEO, Mr Kane, is still suffering from the effects of Covid and will be joining us electronically. And he has declared that he's able to maintain confidentiality during the meeting in accordance with the local government administration regulations of 1996. Item four, declarations of any financial proximity or interest affecting impartialities. Are there any councillors? Staff being nil, we'll move on to public question time. Public questions are answered and recorded in the minutes and may be summarised in accordance with the local government administration regulations 1996. Questions and answers marked with an asterisk have been amended either for the purpose of summarising, removing preamble statements or for editing. And all questions received have been answered or haven't received any as yet. And one person has registered to ask questions. Thank you, Shere Keane. If Shere is here, if you could please come to the podium. Once you arrive, if you could turn the microphone on and ask your questions, please. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Just push that. That's it. Beautiful.
Mr Mayor, I, like other residents of the city of Swan, commend the council bringing this item forward tonight. But it appears to only deal with behaviour within council chambers. Will these recommendations have an impact on councillors' behaviour outside the chambers? Will the abuse and aggression towards members of the community stop? Will the harassment of people who don't conform to the views of some councillors stop? Will the stalking by some councillors of their colleagues stop? Will the attacks on hardworking community groups by some councillors stop? Will the attacks on candidates not aligned with certain councillors at election time stop? Sadly, Mr Mayor, we have grave concerns that nothing will change. Like other decisions of this council, there will be those that will never accept the majority decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if those are public statements or questions. You did raise some questions in there and I'll leave it for each and every councillor to reflect on those questions because they are responsible for their own behaviour, both now and into the future. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who've got any questions to ask on this agenda item? Being no further questions, we'll then move to the next item, which is deputations. I've had five people register for in-person deputations and the first one is from Mr Patrick Irwin. Thank you, Mr Irwin. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor councillors. I think the report makes some very good points. But I think there's one aspect of this report which is not going to address the issues that I identify. And this report will not, preventing public statements at council meetings will not fix the one aspect of the problem, which is that there appears to be a refusal at times, an avoidance of listening to community views. And as an example, I would use the Midland Oval issue where, after reference groups where the community made it clear they wanted to maintain the oval, we then found that we had a in-camera, secret committee meeting for some five years because it appears the community made their views clear. So it went underground and it appears to me that what we need is rather than shooting the messenger, we need to accept the views from the community. And I mean, I'm not putting this very clearly, I've had a long day. But the point is that the council at times appears, in fact hostile to different views. And, and I mean, I'm aware that senior executive staff were driving the agenda to sell Midland Oval over 25 years ago. It was quite clear. It was quite clear even at Midland Sherret, for instance. So what I feel is one, one side of the view on this issue has been pursued actively by senior staff and might I say, by long-serving councillors. And I don't feel that the review was conducted in diligence. It was short-circuited. It failed to achieve its stated outcomes. And it felt that senior staff and long-serving councillors had no intention of actually carrying out the review, which we were looking forward to. So my, my point is, don't, don't shoot the messenger here. The point is that City of Swan needs to listen to the community and engage. Don't, don't use hostility and avoidance. We may not always all agree, but we need to be able to work together. Because I actually believe that we all have the same interests of the city of Swan as a whole at heart. So please, no more, no more bullying, threats of lawsuits, at cost to ratepayers. And what I, last point, I'd like to see the city taking more diligent action on some of the state planning issues, the main roads, rail issues. For instance, we have, we now learn that could be a $2 billion interchange underpass at Woodbridge. This is something that has potentially vast impact on Woodbridge, the city of Swan as a whole. And these major projects, it feels from the community point of view that the city is keeping quiet about it and basically saying that it's all in the hands of state government. And we, I implore the city to be taking up these issues on behalf of the ratepayers, the residents, the community and the infrastructure that, that we all love here. So I think we have a problem. Let's find a solution. I don't think the whole solution lies in this report. I commend many of the aspects in it. But I do ask you as a council to act on behalf of the community, which I believe is how it's meant to work. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person giving deputation, Mr James Pollard. Thank you, Mr Pollard. You'll have five minutes also.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Good evening councillors. I wish to make my deputation in response to the recommendation of the council endorser response letter to the Department of Local Government Support and Cultural Industries and adopt the action plan. Firstly, I point out that generally there's a core of very competent councillors who play by the rules and strive to maintain a functional council. Nevertheless, given the behaviours of some of the councillors, I am not surprised that we are here tonight. As a ratepayer, what I've experienced in interacting with council matters has led to frustration and ultimately a loss of faith in the democratic system, I believe, to be the heart of the council decision-making processes. I am to this date unsettled with regards to the way the processes at council have been used by some councillors as a means to achieve political outcomes. And I feel that none of this has been in the public interest. Specifically, I address concerns laid out in the letter to the CEO dated the 30th November 2022, meeting issues with respect to meeting issues and the code of conduct and how I've been affected as a ratepayer by these issues. As a ratepayer, observing council proceedings and, in my opinion, debate has been stifled far too frequently by the application of unnecessary and sometimes irrelevant interactions aimed at throwing off those speaking to particular motions. This is a tactic and does not contribute to good governance. The most commonly used device, the claiming of a point of order, has been used so frequently. And I would point out, most frequently by a particular councillor, to the point where debate has just stalled and the threat of logic and relevance disappears, to be replaced by confusion and disorder and uncertainty. I observe that this can often irritate and create conflict within chambers between councillors. As a ratepayer, it has been one of the most frustrating aspects of council proceedings that I've had to endure. The point just gets lost. I've stood by in bewilderment as amended motions and alternative motions put by a certain group of councillors have been used to dilute the original motion to the point of collapse. In the case of my particular interest, the Midland Oval redevelopment masterplan, I could not sit by and watch this process applied to a motion that had been endorsed democratically three times. I needed to be subject to alternative motions, amended motions and revocation motions that effectively put a stop to the original motion, delaying it by over four months. As a ratepayer, I felt forced to act and to speak up, which I have done. And then this brings us to the issue of code of conduct. In one memorable exchange, I bore the brunt of the conduct of the group of councillors I've mentioned. I made a deputation in November of last year, receiving comments from other councils noting that they had never seen a group of councillors launch such an attack on a ratepayer. This sent a signal to me that all was not well in chambers. I was subjected to leading questions, irrelevance and personal inquiry that left me wondering if the councillors who assisted on drilling me for over 20 minutes had considered my submissions at all or were more interested in attacking my credibility. I do note that a certain two councillors managed to get the process back on track with relevant comments and appropriate questions. And this supports my earlier statement that there is a competent core of councillors. I thank them for their work. Still, in my opinion, there's much wrong that needs to be rectified. Now, as a ratepayer, I didn't bear the brunt of conduct by councillors measured in the report. However, anecdotally, I'm aware of the security. Nevertheless, I would like to touch on other code of conduct matters that I feel have deeply damaged the reputation of this council. I understand that councillors have a duty to present issues in the public domain and make comment based on facts. I would suggest that this obligation, a code of, a code of conduct obligation has not been strictly observed by a block of certain councils interacting on social media and the print media within the community. Without naming names or trawling over the facts in dispute, I feel it is enough to say that when I read some of the statements made by some councillors with regards to financial details of City of Swan project on social media, leading up to a decision on a particular motion at council, I could only form the opinion, the information had been misrepresented and it didn't align with what I had read and understood in public reports.
Yeah, one minute left, thank you.
The old adage, never let the truth get in the way of a good story, seemed to never have been more appropriate. The block of councillors referred to by one of them on the record as the Guildford Five, published in the Echo newspaper, a full-page commercial advertisement including a photograph of the five councillors and accompanying text. They essentially claimed that they were not happy with the council-endorsed decision, settled democratically at council earlier. They cherry picked facts from the council report and made unsubstantiated claims and speculative claims to the public in order to garner support for a revocation motion that failed. This was a step too far, in my opinion, and reflects behaviour by certain councils as unbecoming of the role. And in my opinion undermines the integrity of other councillors. I suggest that behaviours such as this do not meet the standard of personal behaviour as outlined on page five of the action plan in attachment four. This should not be allowed. I welcome the review and plan and hope that it brings change. What I've witnessed and become involved with, in my opinion, has not just been an unnecessary waste of time and money, but a destructive process affecting the relationships of our elected councillors and frustrated the passage of decision-making that is in the interest of the public.
Thank you, Mr Pollard. That's your five minutes.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr Terry Quaife. Thank you, Mr Quaife. You also have five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a resident of the city of Swan, having recently built a new house in the Guildford area. Firstly, I would like to say the city is a wonderful place to live with a refreshing mix of lifestyle attractions such as the Swan Valley, Swan and Helena Rivers, the Guildford Heritage Precinct, the Allenbrook Community and also the strategic metropolitan centre of Midland, just to name a few. However, tonight I would like to comment on the Department of Local Government intervention, which requires the city to respond to recent governance concerns. I've followed the workings of this council for the last three years when myself and my wife submitted a planning application for a new house and have since followed other matters, both large and small, which regularly come before the council. My view is that there is a slim majority on council who work very hard for their communities to provide fair and reasonable governance. This council is not ineffective. However, it has been forced to battle against a minority whose methodology is to stall and confound and push minority agendas. This is not high politics. It's not federal or state government. It's local government. However, at council meetings, we witness endless interjections, interruptions and points of order on trivial matters. This is acknowledged in the council's response to the Department of Local Government, which states that it is acknowledged that many points of order are not consistent with the requirements of clause 5.2 of the meeting procedures. This is disrespectful to the other councillors and to the ratepayers who are forced to endure this time-wasting and divisive behaviour, behaviour over and over again. At times, these interventions seem to me to constitute bullying behaviour designed to silence other councillors who are trying to express their views on the matter at hand. It is clear from the televised meetings that this behaviour is not widespread within council, but is limited to just a few councillors. The proposed remedy to force all councillors to undergo training appears to ignore the obvious and is an insult to those councillors who behave professionally in carrying out their duty. The majority of councillors don't need training. However, I would support a more targeted approach where those councillors found to be acting in contravention of the procedures are sanctioned and must then submit to appropriate training. This sort of behaviour on council also concerns me because it encourages minority fringe groups trolling on social media. There are a number of social media pages which include current sitting councillors or their families peddling their conspiracy theories about the city and its offices. I find some of this content to be reprehensible and don't understand how sitting councillors can be allowed to associate themselves with these sites and the information that they represent. One of the subjects of greatest concern at the moment is the Midland Oval redevelopment project, a vision set out by council in 2011 and subsequently endorsed by council in 2018 after extensive community consultation and a community by design process. That's five years ago. Despite this much-needed and visionary development and the council's decision to go ahead, there are still members of council who are actively working against this project. They want to have more open space. What? The town of Midland does not need open space. A five-minute drive in any direction will give you as much space as you need. There is a very small fringe group minority, including some sitting councillors, who believe they speak for everyone in trying to send this project back to the drawing board. They will still be moaning and complaining when the people of Swan are enjoying this development in the middle of Midland in the sunshine. It is simply undemocratic to continue subverting this initiative long after the council has decided to go ahead. And minority groups claiming to be
Yeah, one minute left, thank you.
Claiming to be acting in the interests of the broader population should be ignored. It is particularly important that the city's administration should not be required to spend any more valuable time on this subject. And council should not be asked to keep reconsidering the plan or parts of it. Finally, I wholeheartedly support the proposal to remove some of the frivolous and vexatious complaints from the business of the council, particularly for the CEO to have authority to decline such complaints. The CEO should also have the authority to decline frivolous or vexatious complaints or questions from councillors, which also wastes the time of our administration team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Pollard. The next speaker is Claire Scanlon. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Mr Quaife. My apologies. Thank you, Claire. You'll have five minutes after, once you start speaking.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Good evening, everybody. So I've read through the report and some of the concerns raised by the department are the length of the council meetings. And oh my goodness, they have been long. You've all sat here more than one night in a row to go through an agenda which is a very large item. Now, some of the solutions in the report have obvious merit such as councillor training and ensuring there are good working relationships between councillors. But many solutions in the report to reduce the length of meeting times are simply Band-Aid solutions. And they're in the wrong places. We need to cover the correct wound. Until the report addresses the inequalities on council of both elected members and the wards they represent, nothing will change. Unfortunately, this report does not tackle the root cause of the dysfunction that I see on council. One of its answers to reducing council dysfunction is unbelievably to remove public statement time. So I always found public statement time incredibly valuable and was sometimes the first I had ever heard of an issue. How will be removing the right of community members to speak improve council decision-making? The right to be heard is fundamental to democratic society. Other suggestions include stopping councillors from asking questions, an incredibly important time to be able to clarify issues with staff and residents and explore ways to resolve issues. Reducing the amount of time councillors can speak and discouraging councillor notices of motion. Goodness, why even have a council? Now, some may believe that councillors, independent councillors such as councillor Bowman, councillor Catalano, councillor Johnson, are responsible for the meetings running over time. But in truth, it's just a huge number of agenda items. These councillors and others who are asking questions and raising motions are doing it for a good reason. It's to ensure good governance. That is council's role. So how do we reduce the length of time of council meetings? The report suggests there is already an appropriate amount of delegation to administration. So that's not the answer. Now, if we consider the events that transpired at the recent annual meeting of electors, I would say the root cause of dysfunction is between the peers and the Midland Guildford wards. In the city of Swan, it's immense diversity. We have very different areas and very different priorities. And I believe perhaps we should consider separating some of the newer growth areas from the older areas with differing interests of the community and of their representatives on council. Now, the length of council meetings correlates to the length of the agendas. The size of the agendas correlates to the size of this local government area. And the dysfunction on council correlates to the differences in our areas and communities. A divided council reflects a divided community. Now, there are many ways to cut this pie should council decide to pursue an option like this. And there are people far more knowledgeable than mean ways to do this. I wasn't going to speak of council standard panel complaints, but I think I do need to mention it.
Yeah, one minute left, thank you.
Perfect. So a suggestion is to allow the CEO delegate, sorry, the ability to refuse councillor complaints. Now, I did have councillor complaints refused when I was a councillor. The CEO refused to submit them. And I was very disappointed because I felt it was a serious matter that needed to be addressed. The CEO is always very knowledgeable in local government. However, the complaints process is there for a reason. It needs to be decided by an independent authority. Please, don't accept this report, but consider the points I've raised. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker and the final speaker making deputation is Francesca Irwin. Thank you, Francesca. You also have five minutes once you start talking.
Thank you. I thoroughly endorse everything that Claire Scanlon just said. I welcome the review and the attention now forced upon the council. I strongly support the training suggestions with as much dysfunctionalism and it relates to different skills, behaviours and habits of the councillors and the mayor. The mayor should facilitate these meetings, but we do often observe making rulings. This includes interrupting councillors, not allowing questions to staff, disallowing points of order from one faction but not the other. So yes, to role training if then enacted. Moving on though, that's something I do agree with on the, on the recommendations. But I do strongly oppose the section that suggests removing public statement time, removing questions by council members and reduce debate time. As Claire Scanlon has just said, well, you know, that's what the council's role is partly to do. Why would you be removing it? It's really, the suggestion to do so is really only a reinforcement of the signal that the city of Swan wants to shut down community engagement, inquiring councillors and debating motions. Why? I think your job is to go through the agenda. I think as Claire Scanlon has just pointed out there, perhaps you should be looking in different directions about the length of the meeting. And also let's really be brave and acknowledge what is really happening here. Yeah, the division between a couple of wards is absolutely paramount. The Midland Oval issue. Nowadays, anything to do with Midland, Tui Gardens, the need for community centre, visibility, financial records, traffic management, planning, any of those topics, they get a stop down. They get blocked. For those community councillors who have the strong mandate for Midland Guildford, their motions and questions are denied oxygen. Humongous efforts by the community. So don't say it's a tiny minority because that's ridiculous. You know the petitions, you've seen the rallies, you've seen how much this is not a minority issue. So it's a humongous effort by community and some councillors to share relevant researched information. But it's mostly often waved away by an on-block hand-raising with no input or intellectual response. And meanwhile, the social media, it's quite remarkable, some of the comments tonight speaks of bullying, rudeness and trickery inside and outside the council chambers. Well, some of the things said by some of the speakers today, I absolutely agree with. Absolutely abhorrent, terrible. We are in such a mess. You're not working as a council. But, but a training, that won't do it. Although it's a good idea to have a training. Finally, the report, it doesn't address things like the uneven bias and distribution. Finally, the report, it doesn't address things like the uneven bias and distribution of information and process. Um, I'll give you a couple of examples, now just recent ones. The PS councillor puts up a motion to forge ahead on the two eighteen norm whilst there is a confidential councillor meeting process. Already mandated and already in process on the topic. And at the next agenda, a member of the public reveals confidential information about land sales and options. That the community has no public knowledge. He reveals knowledge that nobody has in the public domain. Is this one sided? Yes, it is. The recent A E M embarrassment, uh, prior mayor getting up out of process, revealing information about Midland. That apparently nobody else knew, getting down and just sitting down and just, you know, telling us all what's what. This is embarrassing. Really embarrassing. So, I mean, the comment that's raised just now about, yep, there's two wards with a big problem. Yes, that's part of it. The council hasn't really got its head around it. This document does not get to the issue. Sadly for all our reputation, the emperor has no clothes. Until we deal with the issues around the differences in the wards. And yes, I agree, the way to go is perhaps to go goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes the deputations. I've got two written deputations. And both the author of those written deputations have requested they be read out. As the CEO is unavailable, I'm now going to read the two written deputations out, but should be on the back of your run sheets, councillors. Uh, the first is from Mister, it's a couple of pages long, Mister Craig Hollitt of Ballsbrook. And he says, uh, deputy, dear sir, deputation is addressed, sir, because it is addressed to the CEO. Deputation for special council meeting, Monday thirteenth of March. This deputation has been prepared adopting the applicable headings. Used in attachment for administrative matters. As a resident rate payer, I have noticed there appears to be a lot of matters coming unnecessary to council that should be dealt with administratively. This appears to be supported in the correspondence from the Department of Local Government, Sport and Industries correspondents attached to this agenda. This has led to a situation where council meetings often can be, can no longer be completed in a single evening. This needs to be addressed. I've also observed relatively minor matters consume an extraordinary amount of debate time in council. To the detriment of other items on the agenda. I believe that this needs to be reined in and not to stifle debate, but to ensure that the length of the debate on any matters is proportional to the matter at hand. If these matters could be dealt with in a more, on a more administrative level, then I believe this could potentially be achieved. Complaints. The agenda refers to an increased number of complaints being made. I have concerns that the number of complaints made by councillors against other councillors is unwarranted. Given the majority of the complaints have been dismissed. To me, this appears to suggest that perhaps the complaints process is being used inappropriately. Whether to distract from main issues or to punish a fellow councillor for opposing a motion. I accept that this cannot be substantiated, given the confidential nature of the complaints process. But as an assured observer on the sideline, it is not difficult to summarise that this may be occurring. The other observation is that the complaints process is fatally flawed and needs to be comprehensively reviewed. This is patently obvious from the number of complaints made and the fact that none of the complaints have been substantiated. It would be interesting to analyse why these complaints were unsubstantiated. Were they frivolous or vexatious or were they dismissed on technical basis, including the reasons set out in the following paragraph? My reading of the complaints procedure is that it does not adequately explain. To someone who is unfamiliar with the complaint system, exactly how it works and what information. Slash evidence needs to be provided at the time the complaint is made. For instance, it is not clear that a complaint. The complainant will not be able to provide additional evidence or a response to any rebuttal of the complaint by a councillor complained against. This would appear to be a procedural flaw in the process and it could be argued denies the complainant. Procedural fairness in the process. The use of an external consultant to conduct the complaints process is also something that I have an issue with. Uh, I have seen complaints take many months to work their way through the system rather than being dealt with in a prompt manner. This is unsatisfactory and can leave the complainant with the view that the complaint processes are farce. I commend the suggestion that all complaints should go to mediation with the mayor or the CEO in the first instance. I do not believe the use of external consultants to effectively manage this process is a good spend by the city. Heading personal behaviour. Over the last three to four years, I've noticed that the behaviour of many councillors is now below the standard. I believe members of the community expect from their elected councillors. As an outside observer, it appears that some councillors have adopted positions contrary to those held by their community. Simply due to personality differences with their fellow councillors and to score cheap points. Such antics are counterproductive and do nothing to promote the actions of a council as fair and balanced. I'm aware that in the P S ward, there has been considerable dissent between sitting councillors. Rather than all the cancers seeking to work together for the greater good. This is not in the best interest of those rate payers and residents in the P S ward. I feel it is inappropriate that cancers are regularly on their mobile phones, sending and receiving tech. Text messages during council meetings rather than providing their undivided attention to their council business for which they're being paid. This would not be tolerated in any other workplace. Mobile phones should be off during council meetings. I've watched the behaviour of councillors in different times towards the mayor and other councillors. And have been amazed that some cancers would behave in such manner. On occasion, I form the view that the way in which those cancers have addressed the mayor to be disrespectful of the position of mayor. I'd like to see more respect shown by cancers to the mayor and other cancers in the chamber. To an outside observer, the behaviour of councillors as a whole has not been to work together as a cohesive unit. But rather as individual groups who appear more concerned about opposing anything that the other group of councillor proposes. Instead of considering what is the greater good for the residents of the council overall. I have witnessed councillors leaving meetings appearing to be seeking to avoid having to vote on motions or bearing excuses proffered.
Points of order. That's you five minutes, Mr Matt.
I'm going to keep reading. Thank you, councillor Johnson. Uh, this didn't eat in person. It's a written deputation. I gave a commitment to read both of the, um, deputations out. I have witnessed cancers leaving meetings appearing to seek avoid having to take a vote on motions on various excuses pro offered. This is unacceptable when they are elected to make those decisions. All cancers need to take their duty seriously and devote on all motions being considered by council. I personally would like to see all personal differences and personal slurs put aside with all cancers working for the greater good. If cancers cannot do this, then they need to seriously consider if they should be in this role. And whether they are representing the best interests of their constituents. I commend the department on identifying that there are problems in council that need to be addressed. Or more significant consequences may flow. I also commend the CEO for the draft plan to work through these issues and create a more cohesive council. That works together for all the right reasons. Yours faithfully, Craig Hollitt. The next deputation, which is only half a page on our read, is from Peter Dolan and Gabriel Morgan. We note that the present, uh, the report presented to council tonight. We also note that the report is centred around behaviour of councillors in the council chamber. There is however, another side to councillors and their actions that need to be considered. Councillors are not only our elected representatives, but they are the face of the city of Swan to our community. Their behaviours have a direct impact on people's lives and the reputation of the city of Swan. After many years of enduring harassment, bullying and witnessing extensive inappropriate behaviour of a city of Swan councillor. Towards us and many of our neighbours. The treatment we have received escalated to the point where we seriously contemplated selling our home and moving elsewhere. We've had to consider police assistance for our own safety and peace of mind. Along with other residents, we believe that the manipulative. And biased behaviour of a number of councillors have displayed since holding office on council. Has possibly extended into and influenced decisions of the actions of follow councillors. And city administration that requires immediate investigation. We can no longer be silent by the inconsistent treatment and cronyism of some members of this council. The mental strain on us as a family and targeted members of the community cannot be tolerated. We have detailed timeline of abuse and harassment outlining this inappropriate behaviour. We personally have received and witnessed. Uh, we have made many attempts to seek help from the city of Swan and others to address the injustices that have been dealt to the residents. We now formally request that in addition to the recommendations contained in this report tonight. That the behaviour and responsibility of the councillors outside chambers be addressed. Thank you. Uh, that takes us to item seven of the agenda and, uh, have any councillors got any questions? Councillor Bowman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've got a few since I hadn't had time to submit because of the lateness of the agenda. Um, Mr Mayor, the report on page thirteen states there have been several attempts to address a number of areas of concerns since two thousand and seventeen. And two thousand and seventeen, the guided self-assessment conducted through A I C D didn't progress. How many of the fifteen councillors were engaged and undertook the self-assessment? Two thousand and eighteen cultural review, a number of actions identified, but didn't progress. What was the level of support from councillors? And two thousand and twenty mediation, was there not an agreement reached? Normally the outcome of mediations. Yet there was not unanimous support from all. Is that correct? That's my first question.
I don't have all the information. I only gave my knowledge, but I believe that's correct. Councillor Bowman, uh, some cancers didn't attend the mediation and the other, um, meetings held. And some didn't agree to, uh, the mediation process.
So Mayor, my next question is, um, the mayor and to a lesser extent deputy mayors, in any like government player role, ensuring. The councillors collaborating, working together, remains respectful to others' views, et cetera. What have those who have previously held these positions since two thousand and seventeen done or tried to do?
Prior to two thousand and seventeen.
Since two thousand and seventeen, this is where I've identified the issues are. Has there been any?
Well, we've had those processes you've just talked about, uh, councillor Bowman. There've been a couple of mayors since two thousand and seventeen, myself and councillor, former councillor Bailey. And a couple of different, um, deputy mayors.
So except, my understanding then is, because I wasn't around, except for those three things that I mentioned before, that's pretty well all that's been tried.
I'd say that's correct, yes.
The report's silent on whether there's only one or two submitting complaints that are not leading to anything, or is, or is it more widespread? Is it being recognised? And again, uh, will the change that's been recommended? Just lead to those councils getting members of the community to submit their complaints on their behalf? And also on page thirty four, where they're talking about mediation with the mayor. What will be the outcome of mayor? And we've all seen it in every local government from times is aligned to a particular group. Would this not just create more angst and issues? Is there going to be a process there?
Well, there's always a process. Uh, I did, uh, I thought I'd successfully negotiated a couple of years ago between a couple of councillors. Um, they agreed to abide by an agreement, but within perhaps a week, um, they're both accusing each other of breaking that agreement. Um, so I, I can only lead by example, set a high, um, standard of behaviour. And request all other councillors do the same. I cannot control the behaviour of individual councillors. I cannot preempt what they may say. So until they've said it, I can't make a ruling, uh, to say whether it's appropriate or inappropriate. And I certainly can't control anyone's behaviour outside this chamber and or inside this chamber. It's up to each and every one of you to control yourselves.
I understand that, but my question was, the change approach process is going to be when a complaint comes in. The mayor will mediate between the two parties first. What happens? Is there going to be in that process that if one of those people asking for mediation? Is aggrieved that the mayor is involved because they think it's biased. I understand if the complaint is against the mayor, it will go to the deputy mayor. But how's, how's the perceived bias going to be dealt with?
Well, I think I can speak for myself. Uh, I've only got seven months to go on this role councillor Bowman. I don't think I've got a bias towards anyone. I'm not in anyone's, uh, um, camp, so to say. So I'll treat everyone fairly, equitably and do the best I can to try and resolve any issue between councillors. But once again, the end point is that's up to them. Uh, and we'll just have to wait and see how it goes. I can't predict what the future will hold, who may or may not, uh, have complaints. As I said, uh, when I was mayor a few years ago, I did the mediation between a couple of cancers. Uh, they agreed on a certain course of action and then they were both complaining the other party wasn't abiding by the agreement.
So what I'm hearing is perhaps there isn't, that hasn't been thought of yet, but.
Well, until it happens, councillor Bowman, I can't predict the future.
On page twenty four, it lists the stats for the number of items to be withdrawn each week or each council meeting. How many of these were actually against the officer's recommendation as opposed to merely changing part or adding part? As that would indicate two different issues.
I'd have to say that on notice, councillor Bowman. I didn't have that information in front of me at this time.
Through you, Mr Mayor, can we perhaps ask the staff, uh, because obviously we're making a decision tonight?
Well.
Was it looked at?
I don't know. I can defer to Mister Fruing or any other senior staff, but I, without pre-notice of the question, I can't. I don't want to make up an answer and it be wrong. I'd rather take it on notice and provide a correcting, correct information at a later time. Mister Fruing?
Through, uh, through the chair, we could certainly have a look at that information, whether the minutes will reveal the type of information you're seeking is not the matter, but we can certainly look at it.
Mister Mayor, page twenty seven states because of the high numbers and some, and in some cases the complexities of complaints. Processing complaints has now become a major issue for government staff. Can this be further elaborated? Because isn't the complaint sent to the standards panel or the internal investigator? And sometimes some additional information they require. My understanding, Mr Staff, don't investigate anything.
Uh, that's my understanding. It's, it can be inappropriate for staff. Mister Fruing?
Uh, that's entirely correct. Uh, but because of the volume of complaints. Uh, and the interaction with those involved, uh, the correspondence necessary. The administration of the whole function of managing complaints has become an issue for the administration.
Mister Mayor, why the suggestion of the Welga diploma course? What is the end result expected to achieve by doing this course? I've raised my concerns with the CEO. I personally agree with it, but that's my personal view. Especially when we look at the cost will be well over five thousand dollars per councillor. When I personally believe there's much better courses provide a better outcome. So my question was, why the suggestion of Welga? And not something else? I note that A I C D is also recommended.
Well, I didn't write the report, councillor Bowman, so, um, there are five compulsory. Units that all cancers must undertake in their first twelve months of office. That's in legislation, whether they continue to follow up and do the seven additional. Components or units of that course to get a diploma. But I suppose it's all about training, understanding different aspects, raising questions at those courses to seek further information. Um, or some people just like having diplomas sitting on their wall, councillor Bowman. But I think that should be a precursor before applying or doing any other further studies, especially if it's going to cost rate pays in the order of ten plus thousand dollars. To do those other courses.
So Mister Mayor, through you can perhaps, like, the question be directed to the authors of the report as opposed to you keep trying to answer it, which you've.
Well, you're asking me the question. I said, I, I didn't write the report. I can't answer. I can only give you my opinion.
Mister Mayor, with all due.
I will defer to Mister Kane as the author of the report.
And Mister Mayor, just with all due respect, I've got to direct my questions through to you.
Yes, I understand that. I thought you'd asked me the question. I've, I've just said I'll defer to Mister Kane. Thank you, Mister Kane.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. If I could come back to the last question first in terms of the issue around staff and for matters to do with a complaint. Each summer complaint is lodged, there is a minister process goes with it. Requires generation of forms, registration of forms. And we're in division of three, complaint, liaison back with the investigating officer on behalf of the, of the city. So it's not a case of just lodging something and it's fire and forget. This is ongoing string with the administration that comes back with it. Right down to the registration of results, passage of information results, the updating of the cities, uh, of the cities complaint register. In terms of the issue around training, having been elected to council and legally bringing your own skills. The Department of Local Government has through Welga, uh, produced a diploma in order to try and encourage people. To raise a level of professionalism for working in the local government sector. So the recommendation about that is to improve the depth and understanding of local government as a whole. For persons who may not have worked in the local government sector. Secondly, the A I C D in terms of its, uh, course for company directors focuses specifically on. focuses specifically on the issues around corporate governance. That's a big part of what it takes to be a councillor, particularly if you're a producer or a junior element and those issues to do with the submitted of the audit and risk committee. So these two key areas were ones where they're already well enmeshed inside local government. They're accepted as providing a degree of professionalism for people who wants to work in local government. And that's why we've suggested going beyond simply the compulsory on it and for those who want to be more in depth in the sector to look those two with the training.
Any further questions councillor Bowman?
Mr Mayor, the council meeting lengths. Is there any improvements that can be made to the length of the meetings by ensuring all reports provide all correct and relevant information for councillors to be fully informed and therefore reducing the number of questions? Is there anything recommending to be put in place for that?
I'll have to defer to you, Mr CEO, thank you.
Thank you, I'm through the chair. As I've already said to the councillor Bowman, sorry, that gives me this frog's foot stage and I throw it as a COVID frog. So I have a clear responsibility, although I am responsible for quality of the staff reports and that's the way I will continue to focus on producing reports of a good solid standard and allowing for extensive questioning that some councillors do prior to presentation of materials to council. So the questions that we've received and the issue of answers aren't being identified or isn't being identified by the department as one of the quality control issues that's at the council. But it is my job as to the CEO to make sure that we will be producing reports of good solid quality.
And Mr Mayor, I've got an alternative motion I'll give to staff now so they have ready for later plan.
Thank you. And you can provide those written questions councillor Bowman to the minute clerk, so she didn't have to listen to the live stream to type it all down, thank you. Are there any other questions councillor McCully?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and some of these may be that they are taken on notice and staff respond at another stage. Question one, by my calculations, the total cost of legal advice and complaints costs is $3.2 million over approximately a three-year period. Can you confirm that those costs include SAT costs?
I'll have to take that on notice councillor McCully.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Question two is in two parts. What level of investigation and unpacking these aspects has occurred in relation to these items? The first one is the recidivist complaints by councillors. I understand the confidential nature here, but prudently which councillors are lodging complaints and costing additional rate payer money? Due to the confidential nature of the complaints process, could those councillors who are submitting a number of complaints be encouraged on a confidential basis to complete that training relevant to this area of concern?
Thank you, I'll have to take that on notice, Mr CEO wishes to give an answer.
I've had to provide mention to Mayor. You'd be aware of the climate for recommendations in the report is called the department to conduct a session for all elected members. The intended thing of which is to try and get a better understanding for elected members, what constitutes a valid complaint? As you have noticed from the materials and even some of the material I think that councillor Johnson may have spoken over tonight, more than three quarters of the complaints coming through do not lead to or have not led to a particular outcome regarding the breach. If they didn't lead to a breach, then there wasn't a basis for the lifetime of complaint in the beginning. It was probably ill-conceived. But I think that's a training course that needs to be conducted and held for all councillors rather than any individual elected member.
Thank you, Mr CEO. And Mr Mayor, back to the second part of question two. Similarly, will there be a requirement for the legal advice to be released to the rate payers to show the councillors who are continuously seeking this advice and the basis for the advice? Or which councillors are responsible for there to be continual advice?
Mr CEO, I'll have to defer to you.
The general principle you wear, Mr Mayor, is legal advice is provided for the benefit of the council. But legal advice is not released to the public. Once it's released to the public, you lose the privilege to be distracted from the advice.
Sorry, I think I was more specific in not the legal advice itself, but the councillors seeking legal advice.
Point of order.
What's your point of order councillor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As you know, point of order is something that's allowed in this meeting, it's a 5.2. Earlier in councillor McCully's questions, she used the word recidivist, which is a word probably none of us use very much. I've just looked it up and it says a convicted criminally re-offender, especially repeated. So I think that's a point of order under 5.2. One, the speaker's use of offensive, indecent or insulting expressions or uncalled for insinuations. So I think it needs to be withdrawn.
Thank you councillor Johnson, I may have been differing in terminology, so I will withdraw that.
Thank you councillor McCully.
As not the appropriate word. Okay, and question three, Mr Mayor, what is the anticipated training cost as identified in the response to the department?
Depends on how many councillors volunteered to undertake training councillor McCully?
Okay, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Johnson, you had questions? Or you're putting your hand up to raise your point of order? Thank you, any other questions councillors? Councillor Prudovny?
I've got a question through you, Mr Mayor, to the CEO, just seeking a bit of clarity. I don't have a problem with removing section 10 questions by council members because obviously as councillors, we can ask questions all the time and we're constantly getting our questions answered. There seems to be some concern here about the public statement time and removing that. So what do you propose or what are we proposing to replace that with? So that people feel that they're able to speak to council?
Mr CEO?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, thanks for the question. I'll come back to this part to just do an issue of questions. It's a little strange that you have a situation where we answer all questions for elected members prior to discussion on an island, yet we publish some questions and we don't publish others. It doesn't seem a lot of sense to me to publish one set versus the other. If you look at the issue of public engagement, we come back to what is the purpose of a council meeting? So the purpose of a council meeting is for council to resolve the business, that is the agenda that presented to it. That's the primary purpose of why we're here tonight. In terms of the engagement on that, standing orders allow for had a briefing session, the agenda briefing session, the public get up and make deputations on matters before the council meeting. They also allow for any question on a matter before council to be asked. When you come to the council meeting itself, similarly, there are opportunities for deputations and there are opportunities for public questions. Now, if that's the case and you have all this, what's the purpose of public statement time? Public statement is simply anyone getting up at the soapbox and saying, oh, I've got an issue I want to talk about. Doesn't have to relate to the matter which is the purpose of your meeting. Doesn't even have to relate to anything to the city. And when I had looked around at other standing orders, I wasn't aware of any other local government that has this issue called public statement time. We work back through and the average public statement time that Mr Harrison put together and said, on average, it comes through around 11 minutes per meeting. So when we are sitting here saying right, our aim is to have business of the council meeting resolved in one night. Our aim would be to get near best practice, which is where other local governments are resolving the meetings on around two hours, even with three hours. Then you come back and say, well, those are part of the meeting that aren't actually adding any purpose or benefit to what the business of your meeting meant. And I come back to public statement time, I just think it's an unnecessary and an additional factor to this particular meeting.
Does that answer your question councillor Prudovny? Councillor Catalana, you're next.
Thank you, so what, through you to the CEO. So what alternatives do the public have for getting their issue hurt by council? That doesn't relate to the agenda?
Mr CEO?
Thank you, from the chair, you have the deputation case, you also have the opportunity to leave stage to write for whole council. We regularly receive correspondence from parties, but there's nothing stopping, as we saw during some of the debates that I've seen here, all of the large numbers can be right to everyone as a whole. So you don't have to wait for a meeting to meet, just ask a question to council, which can be done at any given time.
Councillor Johnson, you had a question?
Mr Question, does public statement time not also provide a two-minute opportunity without questions? For those members of the public who would have liked to have made a deputation but who are not familiar with council processes or didn't know that the item was on the agenda and yet it is important to them, is that not a good reason to continue with it?
Mr CEO?
I was very difficult to hear a councillor John's line, that's Mr Fruing, if you heard, you might be able to address that matter. I'm struggling with the audio, my.
I can ask councillor Johnson to repeat the question.
Through the chair. Look, there is a possibility of that council, but I think anyone who regularly attends meetings or even if they don't regularly attend meetings, the first thing they would normally be expected to do would be to find out the procedures that apply at those meetings. So provided that a resident or rate payer has the opportunity to address the council, I think the deputations would be more appropriate than making a statement.
Are there any other questions councillors? Being no further questions, it takes on to item eight, leave of absence, are there any requests for leave of absence? Being no such requests, that takes us to part B of the agenda. And item, there's only one item on the agenda, item 1.1, response to the Department of Local Government. And there is a recommendation there councillors? Councillor Bowman?
So I flagged an amendment? Or alternative motion?
Well, is it an amendment or an alternative motion?
Well, it's an alternative motion because no one's moved it yet. So if someone had moved it, it would have been amendment, but now it's an alternative.
Well, I haven't seen it, so I can't rule whether it's an amendment or an alternative motion.
Would you like me to read it out?
Well, I believe before you read it out, I need a mover and a seconder.
With all due respect, Mr Mayor, no one's going to second a motion that they haven't even heard yet or seen.
Question, Mr Mayor, if it's an alternative motion, is the process that we have followed for many years been for someone to move and someone else to second the alternative motion?
Yes, and I'll refer to our meeting procedures local law, item six, introducing a motion or an amendment. The procedure for moving any motion or amendment is A, the member who wishes to move a motion that is different to the officer's recommendation is to give notice of that motion two business days before the meeting where possible. And B, any motion for which notice has not been given in accordance with paragraph A is required to have the consent of the person presiding. Not having seen or heard what the motion is, I believe it's quite appropriate that it be put before council so I can determine that result.
So would you like me to read what I'm intending to move?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Mr Mayor, I move that council resolves to endorse the attached response to the Department of Local Government Sport and Cultural Industry Layer and two, adopt the attached action plan with the following amendment. Remove the words, conduct a workshop on reviewing the meeting procedures local law, MPLL, with a view to making the MPLL contemporary and efficient, such as remove public statement time, remove section 10 questions by council members and reduce debate time to three minutes and replace with the following words. Implement the changes made by council to the meeting procedure local law as it resolved at its meeting date of the first of June 2022. And Mr Mayor, just noting that that resolution that we made did not take out public statement time.
On the last. On the last.
Sorry, one moment. Got a question first.
With a minute takeout, I note on the last paragraph, the word says there's no need to relate this process, it should be delayed.
Thank you.
The mayor, the reasons for change, councillors previously undertaken workshops and changing to the meeting procedure local law to streamline meetings to improve process and become more efficient, with a number of changes resolved at the meeting of council dated the first of June 2022. These changes, resolutions of council have not been implemented by the administration and have delayed improvements that could have been already in place. And there is no need to delay this process any longer by having further workshops on the meeting procedure local law when this council has already gone through a thorough process.
Thank you, I'll ask, is there a seconder?
Question. Can I actually get to read the motion again?
I'll go back to that. What I'll do, if everyone's in agreement, so I'll adjourn for five minutes. So you can read and understand or ask, have five minutes to read the motion, think about it before I call for a seconder. Thank you, so I'll adjourn the minute for five, meeting for five minutes.
Mr Mayor, this is completely changing the process that we've ever done. Why now and why on my motion as opposed to any other time?
I believe it was consistent with our procedures of the last meeting where I'd call for mover and a seconder and then ask for your amendment councillor Johnson, councillor Bowman?
Mr Mayor, with all due respect, that is incorrect. We are allowed to move alternative motions.
So you're moving the officer's recommendation?
I'm moving an alternative motion as on the board, which is not the same as the officer's recommendation.
Out of the officer's recommendation with an amendment, is that how I understand you?
It is an alternative recommendation, Mr Mayor, as per every other time we've had alternative recommendations to the council.
I'll accept it as an amendment, but not as an alternative recommendation councillor Bowman?
Quick question, Mr Mayor, I'm just bucking on councillor Bowman here. Our normal process is alternate motions. So what councillor Bowman has put in front of you is an alternative motion. Can you explain why you won't accept it?
I'm happy to accept it as an amendment, I'll read the meeting procedures local law out again. A member who wishes to move a motion that is different to the officer's recommendation is to give notice of that motion two business days before the meeting where possible. That hasn't happened, we're getting this tonight. B, any motion, and this is under the heading introduction of a motion or an amendment. Any motion for which notice has not been given in accordance with paragraph A is required to have the consent of the person presiding. So I'll get a mover and a seconder for the officer's recommendation, I'm happy to take your amendment councillor Bowman.
So, Mr Mayor, is this the process you're going to be using moving forward? The second thing is, two business days was unachievable when I was reading this agenda for the first time on a Friday morning. And it's alternatives, motions, alternative motion. You just read out under the meeting procedure local law amendments or motions. Mine is a motion, it's called an alternative motion. If that's okay, if that's your ruling, please make sure it's consistent with all other times.
Thank you, if I have a mover and a seconder, then I'm happy to take your amendment. Move councillor Congdon, seconded councillor Zanino. You have an amendment councillor Bowman, which you've already read out, it's been on the board.
No, because my amendment now has to change. Because councillor Congdon and councillor.
Well, if you read out your amendment as you want it amended, thanks to the officer's recommendation councillor Bowman.
Well, then I'm going to be doing an amendment on the fly.
Question. Mr Mayor, I'd like to move for another five minutes adjournment till I have councillor Bowman to reconstitute it. You can do it, okay?
When you're ready, thank you councillor Bowman.
Mr Mayor, I'll move amendment, remove the words, conduct a workshop on reviewing the meeting procedures local law with a view to making the meeting procedural local law contemporary and efficient, such as remove public statement time, remove section 10 questions by council members and reduce debate time to three minutes and place with the following words. Implement the change made. Implement the change made by council, the meeting procedures, local law, as it resolved its meeting date first of June 2022. Mr Mayor, my reason for change is councillors previously undertaking workshops on changing to the changes to the meeting procedure, local law, quite in-depth ones, to streamline meetings, to improve processes and become more efficient, with a number of changes resolved at the meeting of council dated the first of June 2022. I believe there was 15 changes that we went through and voted on them individually and separately, with 13 of the 15 getting up. These changes, resolution of council, have not been implemented by the administration and delayed improvements that could have already been in place. Mr Mayor, the other reason is there's no need to delay this process any longer by having further workshops on the meeting procedure, local law, and remind every councillor that we had quite a bit of healthy debate a couple of times when this council has already gone through a process.
Thank you. I'll see if that amendment's suitable to the mover and the seconder. It's accepted by both the mover and the seconder. Is there anyone against?
Against the amendment or against the substantive motion?
Well, the amendment becomes part of the substantive motion, councillor Johnson, because it was accepted by the mover and the seconder. So I'm now asking, is there anyone against the amendment, the motion as it stands with the amendment?
Yes.
You wish to debate it?
Yes.
Thank you. You've got five minutes to open your debate. Thank you, resume your right, councillor Congdon, councillor Zanino as a seconder.
Mr Mayor, I'm very happy with the way the recommendation reads and I have nothing further to it.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson? You have five minutes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillors, my views are this report does not address the actual issue on this council, which is behaviour of councillors that is not aligned to the contemporary workplace or the expectations of our community. The problem in this council is not the length of meetings or how many notices of motion there are or how many questions there are in section 10, the issue is council's behaviour. But first I need to address an anomaly in the report. In Mr Fraser's letter of the 21st of December 2022, he tells us there were 17 findings of minor breach during 2021/22. Well, the city report at page 28 says that there were zero findings of minor breach. It seems Mr Fraser thinks there are far too many breaches, but the city thinks there are far too many complaints that result in no breaches. Well, which is it? Well, actually, it's neither. The Standards Panel website shows that there are a total of 19 findings of breach against the City of Swan councils, and I've handed out a graphical explanation of this. So if you look at page one, the City of Swan ranks number one for findings with 19 breaches of the code of conduct. The median across all local governments would actually be zero. Using the annual reports of the Standards Panel, we can see that in financial years 2017/18 through to 2122, the average breach but complaint across all local government areas was 26%. The annual reports shows that there are typically around 30 breaches a year. But if we look at the Standards Panel website, we can see something unusual. In calendar year 2022, so if you look at page four of the slide deck, only one breach has been recorded. So this is a historically low number. Why only one breach across all local government areas in 2022 when previously there's been an average of 30 breaches a year? Well, the reason is this, in mid-2021, all councillors, all councils had to adopt Division Three Code of Conduct, and it appears the Standards Panel has changed the burden of proof for Division Four complaints to try and shift the work to Division Three, which is processed by each local government. So councillors, that's why the 17 complaints about City of Swan councils in 2022 resulted in zero findings. Because since May 2021, when the Division Three came in and the start of calendar year 2022, there's only been one finding of a breach across all local governments in WA. With one exception, every single local government has the experience of complaints without a finding of a breach, and that breach had no sanction. So the idea that City of Swan councils are making complaints lack merit is wrong. It seems the standard of proof for complaints has been raised by the department without telling anyone. This applies across all local governments. Now councillors, the behaviour on this council is the same as ever. So where is the behaviour coming from? As I've said before, in my view, it's coming in from the political parties. So please, councillors, don't bring that behaviour into council, it does not meet community expectations. As for the Standards Panel, in my view, it's not working and should be abolished. It would appear that the Standards Panel no longer wants to make findings, and I think the Division Three process should go as well. I think it is unfair and unreasonable to subject councillors to this kind of thing, as anyone who's had a code of conduct complaint made against them would know. If I can now address the rest of the report, which has some merit, but I don't agree with it because it's addressing the symptoms, not the cause. The length of meetings is caused by the number of items on the agenda in this large local government. In the last meeting, the CEO has used all the delegation available, and lo and behold, the agenda was only 250 pages long, and I thought the meeting was going to last 30 minutes. The report says there are too many alternative motions and amendments.
Yeah, one more left, thank you.
I somewhat agree. Surely the response is a more clearly defined policy for staff to follow. Nature and number of councillor notices of motion, currently these notices of motion are about 10% of the agenda, which in my view is too low. Councillors are elected to drive strategic change in our community on behalf of the community, in our city on behalf of the community. We need more councillor motions on notice, not fewer, if we are to meet the expectations of our growing community. The nature of councillor motions on notice, an example of a strategic motion is councillor Bowman's notice on motion to increase rates on vacant land, or my much more modest one, to create a pesticide policy. If your motion is a letter to the minister to ask for safety training or to change the rating system, that's a waste of time. Councillors, the report talks about extensive discussion about meeting procedures. Well, councillors, at the last meeting, we had to explain to the mayor, and again tonight, what an amendment is and how it's different from a motion and how it's different to an alternative motion.
Thank you, councillor Johnson, that's your five minutes.
Oh, thank you, Mr Mayor, but as you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. I'll call for a speaker for the motion. Councillor Bowman, you have five minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And Mr Mayor, continuing on with councillor Johnson's, I think one of the issues we have here is consistency, and it would be great that we keep seeing consistency at each meeting. Councillors, I ran for council to make a difference, to get a better outcome, not only for the Pierce Award, but for all residents and rate payers in the City of Swan and give back to the community. And I'd hope that every council here is the same. Councillors, whether you like it or not, we are a team. And we've all heard the saying, we're only as good as the weakest link. In a game of AFL, if one footy player is kicking lots of goals, he or she is kicking them for the team. If one player is doing lots of extra training and then comes faster and fitter, then the benefit is for the whole team. We are all different. We have different backgrounds, we have different levels of qualifications, we have or had different careers, and we have different interests. This diversity and difference is what can make any council very effective, but only if they allow to. Imagine having 15 of me on council, or 15 councillor Hendersons, or 15 councillor Knights, or 15 of any of the other councillors. You may personally think this would be a great outcome, but it wouldn't be. It is because of these differences that we are not always going to agree, but that is actually good, as this can lead to a better outcome. What we need to remember, though, is that we need to respect each other and respect that we do have different views, different ideas and different ways of doing things, which at times you may not agree with. I know myself, I've thought I've raised some pretty good notice of motions, which some have failed to even get a seconder. Now I may think to myself, certain thoughts, but you move on with the next item. Councillors, we don't always seem to move on. I'm not interested in looking in the rearview mirror, as I cannot change the past. Or I can, and what we can do together is look forward and get a better outcome for our community. Councillors, my introduction to local government was over 25 years ago as a very young and naive CEO in a small country local government. I remember very clearly two councillors that had very strong opinions. They disagreed on a number of items, perhaps it was because they were a generation apart, maybe because they were from different towns, whatever the reason was. And it was even times when it got very heated in chambers. But as soon as the meeting was finished, they would both be sitting down, talking to each other about their farms, their families, et cetera, over a beer. I remember one night commenting and saying, I don't get you two. And the response was, what happens in chambers stays in chambers. And this is advice that I've used time and time again. Councillors, this is not something that's just happened in the last 12 months, it's been bubbling since at least 2017. And it would seem to me either some don't accept there's been issues or don't believe that it's them causing issues. As the report and answers to my previous questions clearly show, it was not previously dealt with. Now it's easy to blame others and to not reflect on oneself. Also, like any great sports team, the captain must lead by example, and his responsibility for ensuring the whole team is one. And when that doesn't happen, we know what the outcome is. But it's not just the role of the captain. Councillors, it is our choice, we immediately stop looking in the rearview mirror, we agree that it's not an individual issue, but it's a team issue, and we'll commit to only looking forward. We're agreed to work together as a team, and we commit to changes as outlined in this report, or the team is replaced with those that will. Councillors, I don't agree with everything in the report, I don't agree with the Walker training, but that's me, that's one thing. Councillors, look past your own personal views. The report to me is fairly inclusive. Many of the recommendations are what other local governments already have in place, why not us? Please, councillors, for our community, we need to move forward.
Thank you. Speaker against the motion? Any other speakers for or against the motion? Then you'll write a reply, thank you, councillor Congdon.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd perhaps like to say on the onset, I'm getting a little annoyed of the continued references to political party or political party affiliations or political party impartiality. So I would sincerely hope that the councillor that keeps raising this would just move off to something else. You don't seem to raise it on any other matter to do with sex, race or religion. Councillors, conduct elected member training is the first one that sits on the action course. And I probably welcome the fact that there is a whole other seven training programmes that councillors should look at. And I think two of those are the planning ones. And I would hope that the minister would have added the two planning ones as compulsory rather than some of the other ones. But it talks about a role that councillors can take up those training opportunities, it doesn't direct that you should, so I think that's a good thing. Then the council meetings, it talks about the length of time in council meetings, and we'd all agree that we sit here for four hours on so many occasions to be followed by another four hours on a few occasions, followed by another two hours, which to me is just an unbelievable amount of time spent on such few items. The current proposed action plan by removing the three sections as discussed tonight, I think will improve the length of the meetings. One of the other statements is working with the administration. And it talks about the elected members can achieve more and make the best out of time by improving relationships with the executive. And I honestly believe a lot of the questions that come to this chamber, if they were only sent to the executives before and asked the questions of the executives and you've got your answers, you wouldn't be asking the same question in this meeting. And I will go further to say, and I'm sorry to say, but it's true, sometimes questions raised in this room from the agenda for the agenda are in the agenda, and yet the questions that are asked are those items that are clearly on pages contained in the agenda. And therefore, either councillors aren't reading the agenda correctly to ask those questions, which they should be, and if they're not quite clear, ask the officers, and if they're really not clear, don't vote. Complaints. Well, for, there's a few missing rooms that have been subjected to complaints, and I think the proposed amended division complaint process will deal with a number of those so they don't have to go into a Division Three or a Division Four. Comment in relation to personal behaviour, and this is a critical one. Again, in this room, and we're all engaged in it, things happen across the table that shouldn't happen across the table, things are said that shouldn't be said. And you have to remember, councillors, we do not have parliamentary privilege. Everything you say in this room, and I said this before I left council in 215, or Saks, some people refer to me as, in 2015, is the introduction of the video to council meetings could be the detriment of many, and clearly it has. You need to mind your words, watch your actions and be careful. So I endorse the way forward, and just please remember, it's an action plan. This is not enshrined in policy, it's an action plan. So I hope that we can all vote for this, push it through, get on with it, and for those who are watching.
Yeah, one more left, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And for those who are watching online or listening or reporting, to see that this council can be united in its one singular goal, which is to be better. Thank you.
Thank you.